Good evening and welcome to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, October 2nd, 2017. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the Town's information channel. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce you to my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Hello, everyone.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening, thank you for being here.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ted Stamblitis.
Good evening, y'all.
And to his right, Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I want to welcome Reverend Mandy Young from Faith United Methodist Church. If you would, please come forward and offer invocation for tonight's meeting and welcome to the Town of Lexington.
Thank you for having me, let's pray. Yes. Holy God, we give you thanks for every opportunity you give us to serve you and to serve your people. Tonight, we lift up the work of this council. We pray for their service, we pray for their conversation, we pray for their decisions, God. We pray that you would give them focused minds and discerning hearts. Help them to make the decisions that you would have them make, decisions that honor you and honor your people. God, we're mindful today of the many families who are grieving right now because of the tragic act of violence in Las Vegas. We pray, God, that you will give them comfort, give them strength in the face of such a horrific situation. We lift also up the many families who are displaced right now because of hurricanes and storms and flooding. We ask for your provision and your blessing to be upon them. God, we pray that you would show us ways that we can be your vessels in this world. Use us to bring healing and peace and restoration. God, we pray for your Holy Spirit to be at work in this community of Lexington. Lead us, bless us, we pray. May all that we do be according to your will and your way. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Reverend Young, thank you very much for being with us tonight, we appreciate that very much. Is there anyone in the audience who is a former servicemember or former law enforcement Johnny Dillard, I'm gonna call on you tonight then, if you don't mind. Former military servicemember, if you would not mind, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Johnny, thank you very much. I caught you blind, but I didn't think you would mind that. Thank you for your service as well. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and report on our executive session this evening. Council met in an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss the following items. We had one legal issue, an issue regarding a proposed PUD in the Town of Lexington. We had one contractual issue, economic development issue regarding Project Wade. And we had three routine personnel matters. No vote was taken. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
So moved.
Councilmember Williams makes the motion, do I have a second?
House Secretary.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is announced. Deletions on tonight's agenda, are there any deletions on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, moving on to approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes for special council meeting and councils' work session on September 18, 2017 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to special council meeting September 18 and council work session September 18, 2017? Hearing no omissions, additions, or corrections, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stamblitis seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is announced. We will move right into presentation. Our presentation tonight is a proclamation read by Councilmember Kathy Manis, designating Lexington Network of Female Executives Day. Ladies, if you are with that group, please step forward to the microphone so that we may recognize you and read this proclamation in your honor. I believe we have Ms. Janet Lehman, Ms. May Buzzard, Ms. Bunny Hagenlocker, Ms. Bev Gunner, not all of you are here, I don't think, Ms. Carolyn Brooks, Joe D. Dowda, and Kathy Norden Foster. Thank y'all very much for being with us at this time. Ms. Manis will read a proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A proclamation of the mayor and council for the Town of Lexington declaring October 24th, 2017 as Lexington Network of Female Executives Day. Whereas the Lexington Network of Female Executives was founded in the fall of 1992 by 11 female business owners who discovered that no executive women's group existed in Lexington, and whereas these charter members sought to promote the interest of women who are in executive and professional positions, providing support and encouragement to women holding positions of responsibility and influence, and whereas LNF E is a professional organization that provides opportunities to learn from others, to be informed about community happenings, and to meet specialists in various fields, and whereas 25 years later, LNF E boasts 34 members, including four charter members, Carolyn Brooks, Bunny H- Haken-
Hagenlocker.
Missed that one, sorry. May Buzzard and Gina McEwen. Now therefore, it be proclaimed by the mayor and council of the Town of Lexington that Tuesday, October 24th, 2017 is Lexington Network of Female Executives Day in the Town of Lexington, dated the second day of October, 2017. Stephen McDougall, Mayor.
Very nice. If you don't mind, we'd like to take a picture with you, and then we're gonna open up the microphone if any of you would like to say anything about this presentation. You're welcome. Thank y'all very much for being with us tonight, congratulations. At this time, we will move into a vision plan update for September of 2017. Actually, it's gonna be for October of 2017, it's hard to believe that calendar's clicking along. The Ice House Amphitheater events fall is in the air and we have a busy month at the Ice House Amphitheater. The Lexington Live Concert Series is in full swing, we've had two concerts so far. The free concerts will take place on Thursday evening, starting at 6:30 PM. Our next concert is October 5th with a band called Liquid Pleasure, October 12th, a band called Finesse, and October 19th, our favorite band, The Root Doctors. And it will be, actually be, the amphitheater's very first birthday. So y'all come out and celebrate any of those. Those, again, are free events and they start at 6:30 every Thursday evening. Also, in conjunction with the Greater Lexington Chamber of Commerce, the Lexington Craft Beer Fest will take place on Saturday, October 14th, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Tickets are $20 a person and you must be 21 or older to attend. For more information about ticket purchasing or for a full calendar of events, please visit our website at icehouseamphitheater.com. Our Farmer's Market actually had its last Farmer's Market Saturday, this past Saturday, and we want to thank everyone who attended and came out and participated in this community-friendly atmosphere to promote and support and encourage local production while educating citizens on the benefits of eating local, fresh produce, and supporting local artists and the SC Certified Program. Moving on to another vision plan update, our South Carolina Six One Way Pair Project is finally on schedule to break ground. The One Way Pair Project will break ground hopefully October 16th. The Town will host a pre-construction meeting on October 10th for the project, and we hope to kick it off again October 16th. Project signs will be placed throughout the construction area after the 16th of October. Construction is slated to last approximately nine months, so please be mindful and patient throughout the construction as we work to create better traffic flow for downtown Lexington. That's all I have for our vision plan update. At this time, we will move right into a traffic update from Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're pleased to announce that a new sidewalk has been installed along Duffy Drive. As part of this project, we also installed four speed tables to provide safe crossings for pedestrians. As the mayor mentioned, we're very excited about the One Way Pair Project that should begin next week and improve congestion for downtown. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, October 11th, at 8:00 AM in the third floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you're aware of any traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please contact 358-7273 and let us know. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mayor Protam. At this time, we will move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 3300-04-014 located at 1120 Old Cherokee Road. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Public hearing number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5300-02-006 located on Buck Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5498-05-003 located adjacent to 169 Industrial Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-07-169 located behind 1002 West Main Street. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Final reading of an ordinance approving a mixed-use plan development consisting of an age-restricted apartment complex and additional commercial parcel. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Yes, sir, please step forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be brief. My name's Kevin Conley. My office is Conley Builders, located on Old Chappan Road. And I just, I don't know if you wanna, if you have any questions, if you wanna ask those later at the time of the meeting, but I have some information I wanted to update each of the council members with. I have here support letters from the adjacent commercial neighbors, the owners of the Kmart Development, and also the Foodline Property Development. And I also have here some support letters from Lexington County Recreation Agent Commission, AARP, Central Midlands, and Lexington School District 1, so if you don't mind.
Not at all, please, feel free. Kevin, thank you. Is there anyone that has any questions for Mr. Conley?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cornes.
Just, just as a point of clarification for you, we had some correspondence earlier, and I know that you definitely wanted the annexation and the PUD to be a package deal.
Yes.
Not one without the other, and just wanted to confirm that if, if the PUD were to pass with the conditions that, that the roadway from 378 back to your property be in a condition to be turned over to the county, and if it were to pass with the condition that, that there be easement access granted from your property to the light at 378, as discussed earlier, those two conditions, if it were to be passed with those two conditions, would, would that be acceptable to you? Because the, the annexation vote actually precedes the PUD vote, and curious to know.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Cornes. Yes, we have made great strides in working with the commercial neighbors to try and accomplish what the Town has asked me to do. We're not 100% of the way either yet, but so far, we've got cooperation from our commercial neighbors, which I'm very gracious for them for being, you know, willing to compromise and work with us on that. We're also, as I stated earlier, working on doing improvements. I've met with the county to discuss improvements to what I believe is known as Derrick Street Extension, and we're contacting those parties. Total improvements that will be a part of this, not counting my building and the facility, but off-site improvements will be somewhere around $750,000. So I've gone to great lengths to make sure that we're being a good steward in the town and going above and beyond what I think is, you know, absolutely necessary, so. But yes, the, those two conditions, and I had talked to Brett Poole today and discussed, you know, if we couldn't meet one of those conditions later on, I understand that, you know, I would have to come back to council, you know, and work on that, but every indication right now is that we can meet the two terms that you've, that you've outlined.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Stamblitis.
Mr. Conley, thank you for coming to make the presentation. A couple of questions, first of all, how many jobs is your project gonna create? Secondly, do you think that project will help spur growth on that side of town, especially on that parcel that we're talking about?
Well, we've got short-term jobs and long-term jobs. Short-term job, I mean, long-term jobs, you know, we'll have a manager and a site maintenance person. And I do have, that's pretty good, I do have some information on those, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna hand those out. But short-term, short-term jobs, you know, all the construction activity and everything that will facilitate that, but I think the two most important factors to, that this development will facilitate are, yes, that part of town, I think, has been much slower in growth and improvements. I think that when we mentioned this development to our commercial neighbors, they were all excited about the development coming for things, spurring activity in that area. So I think that it will definitely help with the growth out that side of town. And the other most important thing is residents. This will be our second facility in the Town of Lexington, if the council so votes, but it, our first facility off of Northwood Road is fully occupied, and all of our elderly facilities such as this are fully occupied and waiting in this, so there's obviously a huge demand for, for housing for our seniors in Lexington.
Very good. Yes, Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Conley, thank you for being here tonight, and we all have concerns about traffic in the town. We hear that everywhere we go. So can you talk to me just a little bit about traffic and how you think this will impact or will not impact the traffic in Lexington, please?
Sure, we have a handout on that, too. We, of course, we didn't really have time to get a full-blown traffic study done, but we did have an abbreviated traffic study done. And what the abbreviated traffic study will show is that we have very little impact. Our residents coming and going, they just don't, we've got a lot of facilities inside our facility, we've got laundry facilities inside, we have meeting space, we have, they each have their own kitchens. James, let me help you. But, so there's, there's not a lot of, a lot of traffic generated because of that. Also, this facility was, this location was chosen because of its walkability. And that was one of the reasons that we chose this site to begin with, is because it's close so that our residents can walk and venture. There's medical services close by, there's shopping close by, there's grocery close by. But if you look at the, okay, there's, if you look at the report on the second page that I provided to you there, our, our total AM peak hour enter and exit is 10 trips and PM enter and exit are only 14 trips per day. So at, at our existing property over, that we just completed off of Northwood Road, we actually only have like seven or eight residents that actually have cars out of 48 units. So, you know, they do have guests from time to time, but it's nowhere near the traffic that you would see from any other commercial development. This is the best neighbor that could be going in this location. It's a, it's a buffer from the residential to the commercial, and it's a very low impact, much less than what a commercial property can be.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, Ms. Manis.
And, Mr. Conley, it's my understanding that your residents will have access to the traffic light at Kmart and at the Lexington Medical Center there, is that correct?
That, that is very much the goal, that is what we're working on, that's what Councilmember Cornes also asked me about. We are working with the property owners to get access to that light. Where we are right now, just to give you an update, is we've got easements drafted and in their hands, and we're waiting for their comments back.
Very good. Thank you very much for all the material, it came very well planned and ready for your questions, and thank you, we appreciate it. We think it's great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you. Can you just speak briefly, it's my understanding that there's an issue related to drainage with the neighborhood that's directly behind where your proposed development would go, and part of what you're doing is supposed to provide a fix for those neighbors, is that correct?
Well, we can't, we're not promising to provide a fix. What we are, what we are proposing to do is our drainage basin that we'll put in actually is a commercial drainage system for about half of the undeveloped property that is there. That property backs up to the existing residential neighborhood. What we are doing is putting in a drainage system that will reclaim the drainage water that is in a temporary pond right now from Taco Bell, and it will also capture the water off of our development and off of the spur road that we're putting in. And it will capture, it is built large enough to accommodate development on half of that parcel. By putting in that drain, the storm drain along the back of that property line where some of the water problems seem to be coming from, we're planning on putting in whatever, you know, will be required, but we're thinking of somewhere around the size of a 30 or 36-inch pipe. I would say that handles a good bit of water.
Yeah.
So would you say it's true that you expect there to be some shared benefit?
Absolutely. I, I mean, my feeling is that by putting in that drainage system, it'll redirect the water in the town. I even experienced it building my office building, there's a, there's a layer of sand, and then you get it to a harder layer of clay, and whenever that water goes down and hits that clay, it's going somewhere. So if we are able to cut that water off and redirect it toward the pond that we build, and then that will be taken on down to the creek, that should cut a lot of that water off. That's the goal.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Mr. Conley, in your email to council and to Mr. Poole forwarded to us, you said, "Also, in order to qualify for the LIHTC, the property will have DTA restrictions that require continued compliance under IRS and state rules that run there with the property for 35 years." What are those restrictions?
Well, the, the whole premise behind the loan compliance and tax credit is that the property has to stay affordable, and we have a maximum that we can charge on those, for those residents. The restrictions also, in order for the investors to capitalize on those tax credits, the property has to be a tax-paying, it can't be a nonprofit entity. So that, I think that's what, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Okay. I mean, you said you want to be a good steward, so if you're already required to do it for 35 years, why wouldn't you agree to do it in perpetuity?
Well, first of all, the way that the, the last ordinance was worded is that the, it encompassed the whole PUD, okay? I don't want to divulge a lot of personal stuff, but I mean, I donated a lot of property last year to my church. If another church comes up and wants to build on that commercial lot, then I would not be able to sell or donate that property for nonprofit use like a church to use. So it causes a lot of problems with the legality of, you know, restricting that property for that. I think the intention here is that I'm going to develop the commercial piece and develop my residential piece, and we have no intentions of trying to take advantage of a nonprofit tax status, because on my property, I can't take advantage of that.
Well, you, you could after 35 years, according to this statement.
I suppose we could. I haven't done that on any other property that I own.
Okay. And your traffic study references your apartment complex, it doesn't address the commercial development?
That's not true. If you look on, if you look on that same page, next column over, it says specialty retail at 1,650 square feet. So in the total column, there's 12 trips AM and 19 trips PM, and that's a total and composite of both developments.
So you're considering that office commercial to be specialty retail?
Very low impact.
Yes.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Conley, appreciate you being here. Anyone else wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Final reading of an amendment to the zoning ordinance allowing climate-controlled self-storage businesses to be located in the limited commercial zones. Anyone here wish to speak to that? And finally, final reading of an ordinance expanding the downtown overlay district. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing a portion of Lexington County Tax Map Number 3300-04-014 located at 1120 Old Cherokee Road. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Old Cherokee Investors LLC owns 20.03 acres located at 1120 Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex a portion of the property. The property is currently The property is currently undeveloped, but a climate-controlled self-storage facility is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned limited commercial and protected residential. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for this property as well as the 30-foot strip previously annexed on this parcel. The commission also recommended classifying Old Cherokee Road as a collector road. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Some motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, Mr. Carrance.
Mr. Hanson, help me out one more time here. The buffer requirements that are going to be in play for this piece of property where they are adjacent to the two existing homes on Brandon Court will be... Can you fill in a blank for me there?
30 feet, as it is currently proposed.
And is that a...
The buffer is based on the use, not on the zoning of the property. So assuming that council adopts the revision to the ordinance tonight for climate-controlled self-storage, that is proposed to have a 30-foot buffer.
Okay. And that's the... I mean, that's the buffer as far as the site plan? I haven't seen a site plan. I'm assuming you have.
I have.
Is the actual facility... Where does the actual facility sit?
The actual facility is about 100 feet from the property line because there's wetlands and a creek back in the back, so it will be much farther than what the ordinance requires. But as you do...
So those two homeowners on that cul-de-sac, they back up to wetlands?
They back up to the creek. If you notice on the plat, there's a creek that runs across there. That is the property line of the parcel we're referring to now.
Okay. I didn't see that on the plat. I don't see that on the plat. But if it's a... That's all I wanted to know. Wanted to know what that buffer was. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ted Stambleitis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 5300-02-006, located on Buck Drive. Councilmember Ted Stambleitis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of town council. Bar Lake Associates LLC owns 56.7 acres on Buck Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. This parcel is part of the Bar Lake phase currently being planned. Properties in town near this one are zoned protected residential two or PR2. This parcel does not have any road frontage. The planning commission reviewed the annexation during the August meeting and recommended protected residential two zoning for the property. Mr. Mayor and council, I'd like to make a final reading approval... A motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Stambleitis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carrance.
Oh, this came before... I'm a little confused here. This came before planning commission and I was here, and it was spoken to, and I thought it was removed from that agenda.
It came back to the next one.
In September.
And was approved.
It got back through planning commission?
It is.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Carrance. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 4300-07-169, located behind 1002 West Main Street. Councilmember Todd Carrance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Autumnwood Crossing LP owns 4.47 acres located behind 1,002 West Main Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A 50-unit age-restricted apartment facility and a separate small commercial parcel are being planned on this site. Properties in town near this one are zoned general commercial and protected residential. West Main Street is already classified as an arterial road. Planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended zoning the property high-density residential and office commercial with a planned unit development special overlay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Carrance makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Final reading of an ordinance approving a mixed-use plan unit development consisting of an age-restricted apartment complex and an additional commercial parcel. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Autumnwood Crossing LP is requesting approval of a planned unit development consisting of a 50-age-restricted apartment complex and a small commercial parcel to be located behind the Taco Bell and 1,002 West Main Street. The entire development will encompass 4.47 acres with the apartment complex using the bulk of the property. The primary reason for the planned development is because the apartment complex does not meet the normal buffer and setback requirements in the zoning ordinance. The planning commission reviewed this project during their August meeting and conditionally
Clarification, before you make your request, Mr. Williams, you said a 50-age unit restricted. It's 50-unit age restricted.
Sorry, my iPad's put a lot of spaces in the words. I'm having trouble reading here tonight.
No problem.
I don't know why it did this. Let's see here. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the PUD unit development with the following stipulations. An irrevocable DED access easement for ingress and egress be recorded allowing access to the traffic signal at the Kmart shopping center located next door. And that the driveway sometimes identified as Derrick Street Extension should be used for access and shall be brought up to construction standards necessary for it to be turned over to the town for public maintenance. For clarification, we are requesting from US 378 up to and including the driveway access for the project. So basically, from where that property is going to meet that roadway all the way back to 378 is what we're asking for. That's my motion.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Some motion. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Carrance.
I'm talking a lot tonight. This is just a comment, but I wanted to share this primarily with Mr. Conley and get it on the floor and in the record as we talk about this. But the road requirement from 378 back to the driveway is what we're asking for. But you do have... Once you turn into your driveway, you're kind of in your parking lot. You have a roadway that goes west towards a spur out, and that is currently within your parcel, part of your development. And so it doesn't fall under those standards. However, since you are going to be doing construction, wanted to throw a flare, since there is a spur out there, and there's probably going to be multiple parcels owned by different owners in the future, and that's really when that requirement kicks in, is when you have multiple parcels owned by different owners. It's oftentimes when we're looking for those roadways to be built at county standards and handed over for maintenance. So just as you do your construction, it's your choice right now, but keep that in consideration. If you might want to build it to that standard so that when it comes back in the future and parcels of the west are there and want to come in, it'd be an easy thing for them to come in. If it's not built to those standards, then there could be a discussion, probably will be, about bringing it to those standards. And that has more to do with the developer to your west. Just wanted to pass that information along.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? I had a question for Chairman Frost. You passed it with conditionally approved. Was this the conditions that you were asking for?
Mr. Mayor and council, the condition that we had was easement. We really didn't address... There were some road improvements right at the intersection of I-378, some of that turn lane, increasing the radius, leveling that out a little bit because it's a large step there. But we really didn't address all the way back to his property. The only thing we addressed was the access over to the stock line.
Okay. Very good. So we cover what you conditionally approved.
Yes, sir.
Temple. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Manis.
So where in here do we cover that? In what Mr. Williams read or...
In the motion that was made.
Okay. So it's covered in here.
But I... I didn't see the motion.
Yeah, I went over and visited the property.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'm sorry. I went over and visited the property, and it didn't make sense to go all the way to the back to dead ends into the woods. There was a lot of asphalt there that's not going to be used by Mr. Conley or anybody else. Maybe some delivery trucks for Kmart, that would be about it.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an amendment to the zoning ordinance allowing climate-controlled self-storage businesses to be located in limited commercial zones. Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Mini storage facilities over 7,500 square feet in size are currently allowed only in general commercial and industrial zones. A change in the industry has occurred with more construction of self-contained, climate-controlled facilities and fewer of the traditional mini storage facilities with drive-up accessibility. As a result, the planning commission recommended amending the ordinance to create a distinction between these two types of businesses. The recommendation is to allow climate-controlled facilities that have a single building with limited customer access points to be located on properties zoned limited commercial with collector road access. The setbacks for this type of business would be 10 feet from a right-of-way, 5 feet from property lines adjacent to another business, and 30 feet from a property line adjacent to a residential property. The height limitation will be consistent with the height limit allowed for a hotel, and the required parking will be one space for every 40 storage units. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stambleitis, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on, our next item of old business is from Mayor Protem Hazel Livingston. Final reading of an ordinance expanding the downtown overlay district. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The downtown overlay district allows flexibility in the zoning and landscape requirements for properties that are part of the overlay. The purpose of the overlay is to encourage occupancy of existing buildings and protect the unique character of the downtown area. With the One Way Pair Project to begin, the planning commission recommended expanding this district to include the properties along Church Street and North Lake Drive between Main Street and the intersection of Church and North Lake. I make a motion for final reading of approval.
Mayor Protem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carrance, second. Some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving from old business to new business, our first item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map, number 5498-03-002, located adjacent to 165 Zinker Road. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. BNT Investments owns 41.6 acres located adjacent to 165 Zinker Road and has petitioned to annex the property. Great Southern Homes would like to develop a 105-unit subdivision on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned... Mine's messed up, too. Spacing on the things, not the... Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial, and Zinker Road is classified as a local road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during several meetings earlier this year and recommended against annexing the property with the protected residential two zoning classification necessary for the subdivision development. I'm not sure what to make a motion for, Mr. Mayor. The planning commission recommended against annexing the property with protected residential. So for the purposes of discussion, I will make a motion for first reading approval.
And I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Mayor Protem, second. Some motion. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stambleitis.
Couple of questions. So we're declining the annexation request with this motion?
The motion is for annexation.
Not as I read it. No, sir. This is first reading approval.
Okay. Because, if I may, I'd like to ask the chairman of the planning commission a couple of questions, please.
Mr. Frost, please. Thank you.
Mr. Frost, if you could, please, would you mind telling us why you propose voting against the annexation of this property, please?
Well, the planning commission in several meetings talked with the developer at length. One of the primary tenets of zoning is making sure that you have compatible uses. If you don't have that, then there's no need for zoning. So when we worked through this and identified the properties immediately adjacent to this were industrial-zoned, the compatible uses there or the uses there would be completely incompatible, perhaps with a residential. It could be a concrete plant, asphalt plant, nuclear reactor, whatever you want to put, you can put it in.
It ain't going to be a nuclear reactor in South Carolina.
But I hear there's one for sale. So it is just one of those things that, you know, as we look forward in not only protecting the residents that we currently have in the town, but future residents, we thought it was imperative that we work with him to try and at least establish a buffering. And what we've done in a comprehensive plan is identified industrial drive and those areas as industrial corridors. Areas off of those are listed more commercial, limited commercial, general commercial. Then we get into the residential areas. You know, we identified a lot of areas along Wildlife, down the end of Zinker, out towards Bar Road. There's a lot of vacant land there, and it's going to be ideal for potential growth as residential areas. But we also feel like it's imperative that we have that buffering and that step down when it comes to our zoning.
Another question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I understand your logic and reasoning, and I sympathize, but did they meet all the requirements on this annexation request?
You mean as far... If it were zoned as a PR2?
As their request, they're asking for zoning PR2, did they meet the requirements as our zoning standards are set right now?
Yes, it's my understanding that they met all the setbacks, and I think they had all the green space requirements, didn't they, John? That statement is accurate, but the planning commission still would need to review the subdivision because they denied the subdivision based on their recommendation that it not have proper zoning. So if it is annexed with PR2, it still would have to go back for further review as far as the subdivision.
And if they met those requirements, would they still be allowed to get the rezoning they need or get the approval of the neighborhood or...
If you annex the property with PR2 zoning, then it will go back to the planning commission for review of setbacks, buffer, green space, and that type of thing. But my recollection is the subdivision would need those requirements.
One more question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Should we readdress... Because this is a legitimate concern, and I understand where you're coming from. Shouldn't we readdress our zoning standards as opposed to where the Industrial Boulevard area is at? Because there is a lot of industry over there, and it's industrial zoning. Do we have any other parcels that butt up to Industrial Boulevard that this might be an issue? I know there's multiple questions.
We talked about one tonight downstairs, sir.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I'm sure there's numerous properties.
There's several properties throughout town.
That are, you know, adjacent to industrial. You know, again, whether we address how we zone those, but again, I think from a zoning perspective, when you look at all the courses and training that we've been through, you know, there's just that paramount issue of compatible uses. And that's, again, I don't know that you can really identify industrial any different than what we have it identified. That's where you put your heavy manufacturing.
Right. And the one downstairs with the office, we actually had an issue that wanted to locate close to subdivision. Where this is the office, we have a residential development that wants to locate next to industrial. So I just don't know if this is going to be a future concern or not.
It is a... I will tell you from my day-to-day job, this is a concern all across South Carolina.
Is it?
Yes. We deal with odor issues, noise issues, complaints all the time from either facilities that move in next to residential or residential that's built next to facilities. And again, we turn them back to the local governments for a zoning issue because we don't regulate that. We don't regulate the siding. So I can tell you, I hear it every week.
I'm sorry, one more question, Mr. Mayor. I apologize.
Last question, Mr. Stambleitis.
Thank you. If I were a property owner and I wanted to sell this property, how would you recommend it be zoned so it makes it attractive? Because obviously, the property owner wants to sell it, and now he... Cause obviously, property owner wants to sell it, and now he could potentially lose his sale here from this zoning change, or non-change, I should say. So we, should we recommend he go commercial, or light commercial, to butt up to that industrial Boulevard area a little bit more compatibly, or, I mean?
My recommendation would be that he consults a real estate professional, and that's not me.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. Councilmember Manis, you have a question?
Mr. Frost, can you remind me of the vote of the Planning Commission on this, please?
It seems like we have one recused, but I think everyone else approved the motion that was made.
And the motion was not--
Not to annex SPR2.
Can I, can I speak?
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem.
Normally, Mr. Frost, I don't disagree with the Planning Commission, but I have been out there and looked at the site, and I have to say that I am probably disagreeing with you a little bit on this, and I have had a couple of your Planning Commission members approach me since then and say, we're not real sure why we voted against that after looking at it, um, especially with the further down Zinker becoming more residential and that type of thing, and, um, with it being close to, it butts up to a plumbing company.
And a piece of property for sale in the back that's industrial.
Yes, yes, and, um, and the other thing is, is unlike homes that you bring in industrial and business properties around, these people are gonna buy these homes knowing that they're buying in an industrial area. So I, I just disagree with this one, I feel like there is an outbreak there, and, um, I'm kinda, I don't normally disagree with you, but I disagree on this one.
I understand.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
As far as I remember, there was a turn lane issue as well?
We, we had talked a little bit about whether there needed to be some road improvements on Zinker Road, um, given the level of traffic and, and the amount of impact this neighborhood was gonna have, um, we weren't comfortable that it was required at this point. However, as we talked about moving down Zinker Road, if there's additional developments, uh, as that traffic increases, some of those may be required, some of those road improvements may be needed at that point.
And I, I had written a note that the green space was a one-way trail into a picnic table, um, and I forget who made the comment, but there was gonna be some improvement.
Yeah, and again, we, we didn't spend a lot of time on the, on the site plan, uh, just given the discussion that we had on the annexation, so we'll, we'll have to go back through and, and go into more depth on what that green space is and, and how they meet the requirements.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Poole.
If I could interject and restate what John said, that i-if it were to be approved, not saying that it is, that if it were to be approved, the site plan issues would be looked at further with Planning Commission, so a lot of those questions that are based around the site plan really can't be answered until there's a, a approved site plan.
Still some work to do.
Yes.
Very good, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I think we have a representative--
Yes, Mr. Corners.
--from the developer here, uh, would you like to, uh, speak to this?
If you would, please state your name.
I'm nervous, I don't want--
Name and address for the record, please, hello.
I'm Scott Morrison, uh, with Great Southern Homes, uh, you want home office, or home or office, or does, uh, office is fine? Uh, we're at 90 North Royal Tower Drive in Irma. Yeah, I, I, I think just one thing to point out, um, when, uh, Mr. Frost is talking about the transition that they'd like to see, I, I think, uh, with this particular site, we've got an advantage with the, uh, large amount of wetlands in between us and the two industrial pieces that are to our, to our east. Um, the Verone's piece, the plumber, and the, and the other one that's on the market, uh, we do have wetlands that give us an additional buffer, uh, that, that help us there. We, we see this, that, that whole corridor on that side with, with Bar Lake and everything that's happening over there, we, we think will fit in with, with that whole area with residential.
Very good, any other comments from Mr. Morrison?
Just, just a question, there's always--
Yes, sir, Mr. Corners.
I mean, obviously, it's, uh, it'd be very unorthodox to do residential adjacent to industrial, uh, that, those are, are very distinct, and, and that would be unorthodox, but some people talk about, uh, does it matter who got there first? It's one thing to put industrial on top of residential, it's another thing to put residential on top of industrial, uh, cause some people say, well, if people wanna buy a house there, they can buy a house there. Is there, is there anything, i-if you guys were to develop a property like this, uh, is there, do you guys have any fiduciary responsibility or any legal responsibilities, uh, as far as information and education to homeowners to say that, that you're adjacent to an industrial property that's undeveloped and could be developed in a wide variety of ways? Are, are you guys under any obligations to have a full disclosure of that? Cause a lot of people just don't understand zoning, and, and I don't know, I'm just asking the question.
I, I don't know the answer to that question, I really don't, um, but with today's technology and G I, G I S, anybody can get on the website and see what's, what's next to them, or they can drive out there and see what's next to them.
Yeah. You would hope so, but people--
But I don't know what, what is for us documentation at the, uh, at the homeowner orientation, all that, I, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, just curious.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stan Belitas.
Uh, question to comment, you said that you have a, you're already meeting the zoning requirements, correct? Uh, that we're, we've imposed on you to do the zoning annex, or not the zoning, but the annexation, correct? As far as the buffer is concerned--
I'm sure I understand the question, I'm sorry.
I mean, you've already met the buffer requirements, am I, am I right, correct? With the, the development you're doing, you said you had a buffer and you had a, oh, the development, okay, I apologize. You met all requirements for annexation, correct?
And that's my understanding, yes, sir.
All right, um, and the comment I'd like to make is, we did create laws with this in mind, that we would have issues where we'd have residents or residential development probably next to industrial, that's why we made the laws the way they are, and you've met all those requirements, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
I believe a lot of that, again, is, is part of the sketch plan, that--
With the annexation.
We, we feel like we have.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, any other comments?
Can I ask, Mr. Frost--
Yes.
Do you know how much further down it is before you were talking about the protected residential coming back into play?
Um, when you look at, when you look at the map, there's actually some property directly across the street, there's, there's vacant property all the way from, uh, there's a warehouse on corner of Bickley and Zinker, and then once you get past that, it, it, at this point, it is primarily residential, um, you know, large tract, um, family estate, all the way over to Wildlife, so, um, you, there's a, a vast amount of, uh, land there for development purposes, so--
That could be residential or--
Residential, commercial, I assume industrial, if the right project came along. I mean, again, it's, it's in the corridor, it's not on industrial drive, but it is in that corridor, so, um, at this point, it's all in the county, so, I mean, we could--
And I guess that's the reason I was struggling with it, not being able to be protected residential because of the way it's set up out there already, and Bar Lake's, I mean, yeah, Bar Lake's not too far from there, I mean, there's, other neighborhoods very close to there, so that's the reason I'm struggling, and there is quite a bit of buffer--
Well, there, there's not between the entire piece, and that's the concern I had, and that's where I think the, the, the little bit of misleading here. There's a buffer, wetland buffer, from the road back to the backside of the, uh, the plumbing supply place, but the actual piece that is for sale in the back corner, there's actually a drive, if you look on Google Earth, from that property over to this property. It looks like that's how it's been accessed, because there's concrete barriers along Zinker Road at this point, um, where the access would be, so it looks like that's where it's been used to be accessed. So there is not a wetland buffer against all of that industrial property. A portion, a significant portion, yes, but not all of it, and the piece for sale is the piece that's a concern, cause we don't know what it will be next week.
You're talking about the piece that has the small house on it?
Uh, it, it's not a house, it's a, it's a small office building, um, in the back corner, by the railroad tracks, yes. It's down a dirt road if you go past the box plant, it's down that little gravel road.
Yeah, I see it. It's awful small, I don't know that you could put much of an industrial facility on that.
And that's why I'm struggling to do it over here, so that's the reason I'm struggling a little bit, or why it can't be.
All right, any other comments? We have a motion for first reading approval and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stan Belitas, Lexington-Sertoma sponsorship request. Councilmember Ted Stan Belitas.
Uh, let me find my page, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lexington-Sertoma Club is holding their annual Big Thursday fundraising event on Thursday, October 19th, 2017. Funds from this event support charities and projects with a focus on helping people with hearing and speech disabilities and sending local underprivileged children with hearing and/or speech impairments to Camp Sertoma. Mr. Tommy Harmon contacted Mayor McDougall and requested a $500 sponsorship from the town, which is a field goal sponsor level, and includes a table for eight, recognition from the podium, listing in the program, and signage at the table. Last year, council approved a $400 sponsorship. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a $500, uh, consideration for $500 sponsorship, and this will be coming from Budget and Finance, which currently, we started out with $24,500, we contributed $10,000 to the Wine Walk, $10,000 to the Snowball Festival, $1,000 for Excellence in Education, $500 for the IIMC Region 3 Conference, leaves a $3,000 budget, uh, left for our donations to Mr. Mayor and council.
Councilmember Stan Belitas makes a motion, do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about--
Yes, certainly.
Um, I know when they first started doing this, that they put a lot of money in at Gibson Park, and, um, have we, have they contributed money to the town recently for our parks or anything, or, or they're not, they're not doing that with their money anymore?
Um, my understanding, and I'm not saying this is 100%, is that there is still some balance of money that they have raised, a few thousand dollars, I'm not sure exactly what the number is, that they intend to do something with in the future for the town, but now their event does not go to raise money for our parks anymore, they use it for, you know, their, their programs that they put on usually having to do with hearing and, and, um, or, you know, death issues among children, those types of things.
Now, I, I think it's a portion of their funds goes to our parks, but a portion of it goes back to the--
You, you may be very well correct, but they haven't done any projects of, within the last couple of years.
Right.
Have they just not wanted to do that because we've had damage to our parks, or what, what do you know about that?
I, I'm not 100% on that, I know we've, uh, they've asked, and it's probably been, uh, I believe the mayor, it came through the mayor, the request from them to identify some projects, um, and that was probably two years ago, and we identified, um, some things, I think we gave them a list of maybe five or six things that were possibilities, and, um, and I don't know if they never identified a project, or, or were building up money to do a greater project, I'm, I'm really not sure, and I would have to ask them, um, to get specifics on that, I just know it never happened.
Can you go and, and ask them--
Sure.
--about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Any other comments? Very good, at this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Steve Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday was the last Towns Farmers Market for the season. We would like to thank all the vendors that participated, and thank Walker Brewer for overseeing the market this year. As the mayor said earlier, the Fall Concert Series is off to a big start. Come out this Thursday at 6:30 to hear the band Liquid Pleasure. It should be a great evening. For more information about Ice House Amphitheater events, please visit www.IceHouseAmphitheater.com. Third, the Traffic Committee will meet next Wednesday, October 11th, at 8:00 a.m. in the third-floor conference room. Fourth, co-council will meet again on Monday, October 16th, at 6:00 p.m. in the Eli Mack Room for the council work session. Fifth, it is time for the Fall Festival hosted by the Town of Lexington Police Department here at Town Hall on October 17th, from 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. Admission is $5 per person or $20 per family. Sixth, the Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, October 18th, at 8:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. Seventh, there are three movies in the park this year, starting with, on October 20th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Virginia Hilton Park, uh, featuring Casper. The next night, on October 21st, at 7:00 p.m. at Virginia Hilton Park, we have So The Story Goes. On October 17th, from 6:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. at Gibson Road Soccer Complex, Hotel Transylvania. Eighth, the Lexington County Museum will host the Haunted History Halloween Program, October 26 and 27, with tours starting at 7:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m., and 9:00 p.m. at the museum located at 231 Fox Street. Admission is $6 for non-member adults and $3 for non-member children. Reservations are encouraged. Does that mean it's free for members? It is free for members. And finally, this event has always been a big turnout, Murders and Mysteries, Walking Tour of Downtown Lexington on October 28th at 8:00 p.m. Tour begins at the vacant lot located next to the Pitter Platter at 116 East Main Street. The event is hosted by the Lexington County Museum and is free to the public. Attendees will learn about some of the spookier and more gruesome aspects of Lexington's history. Because of the mature subject matter, attendees must be 18 or over. For more information, please contact the museum at 359-8369. And one thing that's off the script, if there's anybody watching or listening or interested in participating in Puerto Rico relief efforts, please contact me, you can reach me on my council email address, sbaiker@lexsc.com. I've just got a heart for what those people are going through over there, they're American people like we are, and if you're willing to help out, um, we are doing that. So, that being said, we'd like to wish everyone a happy Halloween, and thank you for watching your Town Council in action tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other comments from any other members of council? Anyone else have anything they'd like to share? Hearing none, are there any questions from the news media? No news media tonight? Any public comments? Anyone here wish to speak on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, that concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Monday evening, October 2nd, 2017. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the Town's Information Cable Channel 2 several times during this week. Without objection, we are adjourned.